It is October 17, 2024. The time is now 4:41 PM. Apologize for our delay in getting started. Want to welcome all of the guests. Please note for the record that Rodney G. is excused from today's meeting, and at this time, can we please get roll call, please?
Nicole Robinson?
Here.
We are in the meeting.
Craig Larson?
Here.
Doris Graham?
Here.
Kevin M. Martin?
Here. Thank you so much. Welcome to all of our guests. Want to remind everyone of our mission, vision, and values: Students First, Respect for All, Integrity, Collaboration, and Data Informed, which drives the work that we do here in the community college. Lisa, has anyone signed up to speak to the board?
No, there's not.
Thank you so much. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? It's been moved by Robinson?
Second.
Second by Larson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? Nays? Ayes have it. Item 1.5, Approval of September 26, 2024, Public Session Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Robinson?
Second.
Second by Graham. Any edits, corrections, or additions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? Ayes have it. Thank you so much. Bill, you're up for Staff and Student Recognition accomplishments.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chancellor Langer, trustees, faculty, staff, and guests. Tonight, we are recognizing the faculty, staff, and STLCC partners who are finalists or will receive an award at the Missouri Community College Association's Annual Convention Awards Dinner on November 14 in Branson. Our first honoree is Mercy Healthcare, which will receive a distinguished business and industry award at the Convention Awards Dinner later this, in November, I should say. The award is presented to individuals and/or businesses that have engaged in significant partnerships with their local community college to stimulate economic activity and support students and programs. As you're probably aware, the St. Louis region is experiencing a severe shortage of healthcare professionals that's affecting the delivery of patient care to millions. To address these shortages, STLCC has explored collaborative partnerships with healthcare partners in our community. In 2022, a new and innovative program was established at Mercy Hospital South called the WIN From Within Program. The focus of this collaborative program was to offer additional support to employees while they completed a program in the nursing and health professions at STLCC. In this program, students are offered a flexible part-time job, full tuition assistance and program-related expenses, a mentor, and a full-time job upon completion from the program. Program started with 15 nursing students and has expanded to 155 students and counting, with more than $1.5 million awarded, including nursing, radiologic technology, diagnostic ultrasound, respiratory care, surgical technology, hospitality, early childcare, and the medical assistant. The WIN From Within Program has been so successful, it is now being expanded across the state of, across the entire Mercy system in Missouri. This innovative program has led to an increase in student enrollments, a decrease in attrition rates, and is successfully launching graduates into the healthcare workforce. So congratulations to our partners at Mercy. I believe they were to be represented here by Michelle Brunz. She is here. Excellent. The manager of Nursing Services and Mercy's WIN From Within Career Center, and among those who collaborated with Mercy on this project are Bill Hubble, the District Division Dean of Academic Affairs and Health Sciences, Kim Kraft, Student Placement Coordinator in STLCC's Nursing Program, and Jordan Cooper, Dean of Nursing. Congratulations to all. Please come up for a photo. Next tonight, we're recognizing Doug Gabouts, Adjunct Professor of Art and Photography at Florsen Valley. He is a finalist for the MCCA Outstanding Adjunct Faculty Award. The award is granted each year in recognition of the vital contributions that adjuncts make to the community college mission. Candidates may be any teaching faculty with an FTE less than 100%. Now, maes must have taught at least one course per academic year for three consecutive years as adjunct faculty, and the winners will be announced at the Convention Awards Dinner November 14, as I mentioned. Doug has taught photography classes for over 40 years at Florsen Valley. Over the years, he's been a dedicated employee and a well-respected and knowledgeable educator and colleague. Many of his students have gone on to careers in photography, consider him to have been a big part of their success. Doug has consistently been willing to help grow the photography program and support students' growth and creativity. He not only purchases frames for students so that they can participate in Portfolio Day and student exhibits, he also prints their work, frames it, and wires it. He has been a key player in our building renovation, storing and moving items, setting up studios, providing feedback for renovated spaces, and coming up with creative ways to support students who are studying in different locations during the renovation. Doug is also constantly in the building, which is a big deal for our students who need support and mentorship, and we are very fortunate. He has dedicated over four decades of his life to our students. Congratulations and good luck to Doug.
He got it now.
Next tonight, we're recognizing Lindsay Fox, who is a finalist for the MCCA Excellence in Teaching Award. It's presented annually to outstanding instructors for work done during the previous year. Winners will be announced at the dinner. Lindsay leads the STLCC Respiratory Care Program. She was instrumental in creating and working through the approval of the Bachelor of Science degree in respiratory care that's now offered at the college. It's the first such degree at a community college in the region. Its first cohort began this fall. She is constantly working to make sure that her coursework is using best practices and teaching students very hands-on techniques in how to think critically. She makes herself available to students and along with her colleagues have provided a Prepare for Success Day that helps incoming students know about all the resources that are available to them as well as all the ways they can best prepare for coursework. Lindsay participates in a variety of committees and has taken on leadership roles in her committee work. Outside of her direct work for the college, she also serves on the Commission on Accreditation in Respiratory Care as a site visitor, Board Commission, Chair of the Accreditation Standards, Policies, and Bylaws Committee, and Secretary of the Board. She is also an advisor to the Respiratory Care Club. She has now been a respiratory care educator for 19 years, the last 11 of which have been at STLCC. Lindsay exemplifies excellence in teaching by all the ways she leads in her program and with her interactions with her students. Congratulations. Good luck to Lindsay. Please come up for a photo.
I just say how excited the board is that we now have a bachelor program being offered.
Fantastic.
And I hope that won't be the only one, but somebody had to lead the way if she didn't.
Our final honoree tonight is De'Andre Braddix, Executive Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at STLCC. De'Andre is a finalist for the MCCA's Administrative Professional Leadership Award, which is given annually to those who have demonstrated exemplary leadership practices within their college and throughout the community. Recipients exceed expectations for campus involvement and for advancing the mission of community colleges throughout the state and have exemplary records of service in professional and civic organizations. Winners will be announced at the Convention Awards Dinner. In his role at STLCC, Dr. Braddix is responsible for providing strategic vision and direction for district-wide diversity and inclusion initiatives. He also serves as a liaison to community partners and constituents on a wide array of diversity and equity issues. De'Andre consistently goes above and beyond for his students and employees, and while his work focuses on the DEIB space, his impact is felt well beyond that. Dr. Braddix dedicates time to campus-based initiatives, such as his empathetic, supportive, and informed response to the recent free expression challenges at one of our campuses, his work to reform and launch various employee resource groups across the district, his approach to removing bias from the faculty search and hiring process, his support for increased college awareness of Identity Months, excuse me, and his focus on making STLCC a best place to work. In addition to this, he will often engage in delicate situations with employees and students, encouraging courageous and supportive conversations. De'Andre is frequently considered a voice of reason, a problem solver, and a conflict manager. De'Andre has passion and excitement for his work, which is demonstrated through the impact he has made throughout the STLCC community. Congratulations. Good luck to De'Andre. Please come up for a photo, De'Andre. That concludes tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to all and good luck at MCCA next month. Next up is item 2.2. The board is excited to hear from our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Hart Nelson, on STLCC transform projects. Most importantly, that we remain under budget and on track, as been one of the things that he promised us from the beginning as we started this endeavor. So, Mr. Nelson, the floor is all yours.
Chairman Martin, I tell no lies. Well, good evening to trustees, to Dr. Langer, and to everyone here. We are now, this evening, going to talk about two of our campuses because my colleagues have told me they don't wish to be here all night, and I am very excited about these projects. So, we're going to talk about Florsen Valley, since that is where our first buildings are going to come online, and I believe there are some questions about what's going on in Merrimack, and so we're going to cover both of those. I will speak quickly because we've got a lot to get through, and there's a lot going on. So, as mentioned, our first buildings that will be coming to substantial completion, I just want to make sure I define that term, that means the general contractor has done almost all the work, will have an occupancy permit, they're still doing punch list items, and most importantly, we're still moving in things like furniture and IT and AV equipment. So, we're not completely ready to occupy the building, but that means we're really close. So, December 12 will be the first building. That's our Nursing and Health Science Center at Flow Valley. I was just in it today, which is why my shoes are full of dirt still, but we are on target. They are putting, carpeting is in, and they're getting ready to have furniture actually start in a couple of weeks. Our Advanced Manufacturing Center will complete about a month later. So, sorry, the first one, we're less than two months out. That's the key piece. Advanced Manufacturing Center about a month after that, on January 7. We will start program move-ins, basically getting equipment in in December. So, starting as early as that, we have some flexibility with our occupancy permits there. Our first classes will start in January. However, there's some caveats. We have a lot of accreditation hoops to jump through for some of them. We also just have equipment that we need to move in, which will take some time. So, what we're moving are those that are the easiest of, hey, they're already offering the program there. If they're just basically walking across the parking lot to a brand-new facility, that's where we're going to start. Our non-credit programs can start at any time. So, that's what's going to go into those buildings first. Let's take a look at where we are in terms of construction. You can see on the left, that is our Nursing and Health Sciences Center. That is that lounge. It's two-story. It's going to have a lot of soft seating in there. Again, one of the lessons we learned, places for students to gather and to be able to study, to eat, since they are in that building a lot. On the right, many of you took this tour, that is Main Street. So, that atrium area with the skylight, that kind of main portion of the Advanced Manufacturing Center, all of those spaces off the sides are where that welding work or precision machining or all of that other activity is going to take place. So, it is very visible and tourable. The monumental stairs up the middle, that assembly stair looks great. Walked up it today, and that is really, really going to be outstanding for us, to be able to show younger students what the possibilities are at St. Louis Community College. I also want to talk about renovation. So, Florsen Valley is getting a very significant renovation. You'll see the budget here in a bit, and we're able to actually do a little more because of some cost savings that we had in the building projects. Our goal is to create density on campus, and so we're looking at two buildings. First, here is the Student Center, and this is the first floor, the ground floor of the Student Center. Most people, when you go into the Student Center, come in on the second floor, but this is the first floor. Everywhere that you see that's color-coded is an area that's going to receive renovation, much of it very significant renovation. The areas that are in that darker gray hashed won't, and most cases, those are because they're either mechanical rooms, they're existing classrooms that are in good shape. What you'll see here is that light green area is the new Dining Center. It is where all the students will go for their dining services. On the left side, that light green is the Servery. So, that is a new area that will be built, basically all updates, more attractive and more welcoming. The key parts, though, is off of this, on the north and south, or the up and down, top and bottom, on this diagram, you're going to see a lot of student life. You're going to see campus life. You're going to see student government, and those are the things that are going to be surrounding that area so students can come in and get activated by those opportunities and be involved with them. In the top left, that area in purple, you'll see that that's actually the student newspaper. That is our radio station. So, again, a lot of these student-focused things are going to be right there, all in one location, creating density. In addition to creating density, if you go upstairs, and I want to draw attention to this, so students would be coming in from, I'm looking on the left side, kind of that pink area, that main space, you'll see a little C shape there, and that's the main reception desk. So, if students come in, whether they're new students or existing students, if they need help, they need to be directed somewhere, they're going to go to the person sitting there, and they will direct them, hey, you need financial aid? Here's where you're going to go. Advising? Here's where you need to go. One-stop shopping. Most of the rest of this are those offices to support those student services. So, again, creating density, making sure that if you are a student and you need help at St. Louis Community College, this is the building you go to, and you're going to get your questions answered. The other thing that I think is really exciting about this is how we are changing the building. That white square in the middle is a brand-new staircase. If you've been in the Student Center at Flow Valley, right now, there is a 1960s staircase. It's curved. Two people literally cannot go up and down it at the same time. It is difficult to navigate. What we will have, and you'll see a rendering of this a second, we're filling that one in. That will go away, and that white space is the new staircase. So, as students come in, hopefully, there we go. Next slide for me, if you wouldn't mind. Clicker stopped working. There we go. So, if you come in, you're basically those, on the right picture there, those windows in the back, you'd be coming in that entrance, and you flow right into the building, go past that reception desk. You can go down the stairs to the dining area. You can assemble there to study, meet with your friends, just have some quiet time. The picture on the left actually shows the new Servery. So, that'll actually have some daylight coming in. You can see the students coming down the stairway from there. So, again, very open, modern, new, not what we have right now. We also are doing major renovations of the engineering building. Initially, this was a building that was planned on being demolished, but as the engineers and the architects got in and took a look around, they said this building is newer. It does not have the asbestos and some of the materials in it. It had good bones. It was, you know, well-built. And so, we shifted plans, and so this building now is going to be our new library. So, this is in the kind of orangish color there. That is a new library and learning commons. It will have our AS&amp;T, so online learning, this studio to record lectures and classes there, a lot of support for our Study Center and students to be able to study and get tutoring and learning, and then on the left side there in the green, you'll see the Fitness Center. So, that will be our new Fitness Center for the campus. If we take a look upstairs to this building, same as before, the gray areas are existing classrooms, really don't need a lot of renovation, but this will be Dr. Perkins, administrative. It will be in the top right there, along with, I believe, marketing and communications, support for visiting deans, that sort of thing. We will have a communications area. That's the top left in orange. And then, we had some spaces where we're knocking the buildings down, and we had some kind of unique things that we need to move, one of which is a piano. So, you'll see the piano and orchestra room there, and then the art gallery as well. So, again, a lot of different uses, but again, the idea is to build density, that there will be more use in this space, which isn't heavily utilized right now. So, that's, this is early rendering, so we're earlier on in this phase, but this would be the lounge lobby area for the new library, and then obviously a shot of what the library could look like as well. Key thing, overhead. Campus on the left is what it looked like. It doesn't look like that now already, but what it looked like before we started. Then, you can see what we're going to look like afterwards. So, you can see at the top of the slide, on the left, the Center for Nursing and Health, sorry, the Nursing and Health Science Center. Our Advanced Manufacturing Center is the one just below the curb driveway, and you see the number of buildings that are being removed. Communications, we have IR, we have admin, PE Building, opening up a lot of green space. Less parking lot, more green space. The campus is spread out, but we're making sure that it remains walkable and accessible. And so, that's what it will look like. Budget, my favorite piece. So, initially, when we started all of these projects, we had an initial conceptual budget, and as you recall, when COVID hit and the supply chain became impacted and inflation happened, we had to very quickly say, we're going to add 10% across the board to that budget. We came up with a new conceptual budget. That's the $450 million that you keep hearing me talk about. The CM estimate is what the construction managers estimate the current cost of this buildings are and the projects. I know Dr. Martin's going to say, Hart, that's more than $140 million, because it is. However, I'm here to tell you that we're going to be on budget, and the reason for that is the last column, which is a very important one, the one that I ask about all the time, which is our contingency. All of these projects have contingency budgets built in. As buildings get out of the ground, much of the risk goes away. As they get more completed, even more of the risk goes away. And I told you, for the Center for Nursing and Health, or sorry, Nursing and Health Science Center, I'm going to get it right, Jennifer, at some point, we are two months away from completion, and we still have $800,000 in that contingency. Advanced Manufacturing, we have over $1.1 million. That money basically won't get spent, and then that makes the construction manager's estimates go down, and we are going to be well on, if not under, budget. The other thing I want to mention here is you see a significant change in the budget we have for demo and reno, and you can see the reason why, and why we're not, we're only $1.5 million for the whole project. And really, what happened there is we received significant savings on both the Nursing and Health Science Center, but also for the Advanced Manufacturing Center, over $10 million in savings on that project. That savings has been reinvested to allow us to expand the scope of renovation, and that's why we're able to continue to deliver this with a budget on budget, and we're going to get there. Our construction manager here is Navigate. They're doing a phenomenal job making sure we're moving forward. Moving on to Merrimack, unless we want to stop for questions in between?
Let's stop it. Questions for Flow.
I've been studying this issue down all along, and I really studied it today with what you sent us, and I cannot compliment you enough. So many things that were seeming to not be attractive to students are perceived as not being accessible, are now, and the perception that you go to an old school because it doesn't matter, you go to different schools. Now, this is about a state, it's beautiful, this new college is going to get it. I think our students are going to be, and our staff and faculty, very proud of these buildings, what you've constructed, and although you did mention that I'm 100% that they're inaccessible, everything, the elders and such, especially and particularly the Student Center, you know, that building was underused, and so I really want to congratulate you on that planning. I understand what you're saying about engineering, and then the two new buildings are mind-blowing. I drove by there recently, couldn't believe what I was looking at. When those other buildings come down and that opens up, that's going to be beautiful. Students are going to want to go there, and I just cannot personally, for all of you, but because when I said Florsen Valley, everybody looked at me, telling you, as someone who walked those grounds for 30 plus years, it's a different place. Congratulations.
And I want to be clear, construction is a team sport. I've done none of this. My job is to ask, how much is that going to cost? And we can't afford that. That's basically it. Dr. Perkins and Julie Massey have been heavily involved, especially in the renovation phase of this. It is, I don't live at that campus. You did? I don't. The people who are going to end up being there and working there and studying there are the ones where they need to have the input on what's going to work. To answer the question about ADA and accessibility, it's required by code. It's required by law, and we have architects who understand that. So, all of that is being done. We'll still have the challenges in our older buildings that aren't there, but in the new spaces, all of that will be done. But yeah, we're really excited. I think that the density is just really going to increase.
It's so safe.
Yes.
They're safe. Yeah, I mean, that's the other piece. We're taking a look at, yeah, it's a balance of safety, you know, the ability to have the access control on the new buildings, and then being able to retrofit that. That project is also underway as well.
There's nothing to add to Mary's comment. Circumcity building, what we're going to do is get out of it.
The initial intent was to sell it. We have had some conversations very early on. Don't want to get too far out over the skis here, but you know, there may be a need for it with the partner that we've been working with in that building all along primarily, which is Boeing, so.
They may be happy to stay there.
There's, yeah, and I think that obviously a lot influx right now. So, I think, you know, for us, it's, it's, our plan will be to move out. Once the Advanced Manufacturing Center is done, we are moving equipment out of that building. We will begin operating the program in the Advanced Manufacturing Center, but the sale of the building would not be something immediate. It was the plan to sell it, and we're investigating still what the potential could be for that.
It's the kind of question that I think board wants to just stay on top of. I don't imagine it's valued very high, so maybe hard to sell. It could be a whiteout.
Commercial real estate is, as Mark tells me frequently, is not particularly valuable right now.
Somebody had a good use for it, that we would benefit if someone.
Trustee Graham?
I didn't hear what building you were asking about, Craig.
Well, I call it the Circumcity Building. It's got a formal name. It's the building that we see.
Center for Workforce Innovation.
Yeah. It's the building we bought and put the Boeing program in. We've all toured there a number of times, but it's not.
Right in front of the YMCA.
Oh, over there, over there, YMCA, Walmart.
That's it.
Because I was always, I was downtown where we used to have the board meetings.
Trustee Robinson?
The lighting that was along the back, there was, in one of our meetings, there was the road that goes along the back.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Right, let's take a look at the overhead.
Was it closed or something? I had someone call me and complain about that.
Yeah. So, the road that goes behind it, and I can't remember, Dr. Perkins, what's the name of the one? The one that's right behind that?
That goes in the neighborhood right back there.
It goes in the neighborhood, right. It was some issue with the lighting.
Hudson? Hudson. It's Hudson Road. And actually, I've driven it recently myself. So, again, the road is maintained up until our property ends. After that, there have been a few attempts at doing coal patch. There was one, I think, that has been more recent because it weren't as many bumps the last time I drove it. We have engaged with city, Dr. Perkins has, I have, and we're not getting any movement on any long-term repairs to that. So, yeah, that's a challenge. We will continue to try, and we are about to have some ribbon-cutting events where local officials may be invited to, and perhaps we can try again at those events.
The one thing that I would like you to fix, I'm sure Dr. Perkins and everyone else who drives there every day, which I do, is MoDOT in the little circle in the front that is the most dangerous. I don't know which engineers got that circle going right past the building to have the bus turn around, which I know we sold property to our friends at the ByState to give them some land, but that circle, I don't know which engineers they went to or where they went to school, but I really am confused at how that circle meets the guidelines when you're driving, because there's no way you can stay in your lane. I'm sure Dr. Perkins knows exactly what I'm talking about, and everyone else who goes there.
We've engaged.
Every single day I drive there, and I'm like, do they need more property? Like, what do they need to solve this problem? Because I thought it was a joke at first. I thought it was like an instruction joke, like they weren't done with it, but they're done with it.
We have engaged with Tom Blair, who is the district engineer for St. Louis from MoDOT directly. Dr. Perkins, STLCC PD, and I were involved with that and others. That is the only return, counter-return bus lane in, I think, in the state, certainly in the region, which is what that is, so that ByState can go the wrong way basically on the front edge road. And that's why MoDOT built it, and they are very pleased with that, and we have expressed the concern that people do not just go 40 miles an hour on the, on commercial anymore because it's one-way, and they go highway speeds, and there is not sufficient signage, and people literally just go right through that circle. We have had overturned cars on the campus, and that is the reason why we. We've also talked with Ferguson PD and Cheap Oil about some speed controls, which they've done a few times to try to slow folks down, but there is not a long-term solution.
I mean, there's no way that turn is engineered properly. I mean, it's not. There's no way, even if you go 20 miles an hour, you still are going to the other lane, like maybe you need to start protesting at MoDOT.
We talked about going to one lane. That actually, we'll have a follow-up meeting with them, I think, next week or week after, and one of the things that was put on the table was narrowing it down to one lane at that point. I'm not sure if that would make it more or less.
No, they just need to make the curve better. They need to move it over a little bit. Okay, so it sounds like MoDOT is where we need to start our energy, because. And whether I drive there, I can't believe there's not more accidents because it's literally the worst engineering job ever. Okay, so let me know when you fix that. We have, how much money left?
I am so far from a transportation engineer. Do not want me on that.
I'm sure if we offered MoDOT to pay for it, I'm sure they would be happy to fix it for us.
I will refrain from commenting on that. I will refrain from commenting on that.
Don't consider that a word.
Right, excuse me, right, I'd rather put it in other places, thank you.
Point taken. Merrimack, so we are a little further out from Merrimack, but those buildings are moving along as well. So our Financial Services Education Center, Emerging Technology Center, we're looking at early June for completion of that, a much tighter timeframe between substantial completion and when we need to be ready. Every one of our buildings needs to be fully ready for classes in the fall of next year, and so that is the goal. But the advantage we have here is these are classrooms, or sorry, these are spaces that are primarily regular classrooms, offices, they don't require as much heavy equipment moving in, so we're still confident that we'll be able to make those dates. So they are moving along very well. You saw what the rendering looked like, now you can see what the building, and many of you I know have toured this area as well, glasses in, the monumental stairs, that's what that's called, the, are in, they are starting on, you know, framing is going on, and they'll continue moving along. So again, these are making some significant progress as well. You can see that's actually even a couple months ago for the inside of ETC, it's much more advanced at this point. We also, and I know there was a question about greenhouses, and we'll talk a little bit about the budget. When this project was conceived, there were a number of line items. We had the two new buildings, we had what was called garden and energy, and then we looked at renovation and demolition, because we need, we need to do significant reno and demo here. Garden and energy quickly became a conversation of how we can support renewable energy or the outdoor garden space. Renewable energy, well, this would have been concepts that we actually looked at, like having windmill farm on the campus, which was something that Kirkwood was not going to allow. And so we moved away from that, had conversation with the Horticulture Program, which is one of our largest programs, I think it's over 250 students, it's growing, and they said, our outdoor garden is in good shape, the greenhouse is really where needed, that controlled indoor agriculture, which is what they call it, is really the need that they had at the time. And so that has shifted to, to that, and we'll see how that fits in. What you can see in these renderings, basically this is looking to the east, is there, and we'll see a little better picture here in a minute, actually, it's on the left one here. Left side picture here, you see kind of a projection out of the Center for Nursing Technology. That is that horticulture lab space, the green roof on top of that, and then the greenhouse next to it basically complements. So what we created is that space, again, a dense space where that, that's that horticulture that faces the front yard of along Big Bend there as well. So I just wanted to, to share that point. Take a look at what it looks like on overhead, this will maybe orient you a little better. This is a landscaping plant, and so on the east there, on the right side, you'll see the new parking lot, and this is the east entrance. It is a parking lot that's really designed for new students or prospective students to be able to come in, park there, and then get to the enrollment center, which is on the right side of this slide, the east side of the building. They'll be able to come right in there, you'll see kind of a little pathway, and that's the entrance there. Then you'll see a space in between these two buildings, looks like a lot of circles, those are trees. So this is designed to be kind of a garden patio area where students can gather and congregate. And then in the Center for Emerging Technology, you can see that part that sticks out of it with the green roof, that is horticulture in that space, and then the greenhouse next to it. All of that in front, on the bottom part of the slide, which used to be parking lot, is now going to be, is no longer parking lot, but it'll be natural prairie grass combined with some lawn, some shrubs, very much greening of it. Think the next slide, sorry, I'm going to jump ahead, I have to jump ahead really quick, I'm going to go ahead and skip out of order here. This is what that's going to look like, basically, overall. So you can see those spaces there, I'm going to jump back again, green in the front bottom right, those are parking lots that are gone, no parking lot at the south part, on the bottom of the slide where those buildings are, more greenery to the west, and then what you'll see in the top left corner of this slide are a bunch of buildings that have gone away, those Alec buildings, the police station and the CE building have gone away, and again, greening that up. I'm going to jump back to my order that I was in, but just wanted to kind of orient you a little bit, because this is also going to be a significant transformation of the campus. Stepping into the plaza and quad, so this is on the bottom left, this is that view between the two buildings, you can see kind of that trees, patio area, place for gathering, we'll have some furniture, outdoor furniture there, and then you can kind of see the buildings then from different perspectives. One of the things that I think we're most excited of is the boulevard, so that new space between the existing buildings and where the new buildings are going up, and just creating that walkable space and that nice flow between the new and the old, and that's, that's turning out really nice right now. We also have significant renovations happening at Merrimack. You'll see the theme here, the student center again, and our goal in all cases is to create that density. Now, we have an enrollment center as part of the new buildings here, and so we didn't need to do that piece of it at Merrimack, but what we wanted to do is bring student services and student activities in closer. So here again, same scheme, color means we're doing renovation, the gray areas are areas that we're not doing much to or anything. And so what you'll see here is that we have campus life, we have trio, we have the access office in this space, that's the first floor of the student center, redo the dining area, which needs a little bit of a refresh, and then kind of a student lounge area up front again, so bringing those student services in closer. If you move up to the next floor, what you'll see there are things like the SARC, Archer's Market, so our student center there, there is advising or counseling, excuse me, not advising, counseling there, our veterans center, and then two spaces, we're knocking down the CE building, and we're knocking down the police station, so we need to have a place for those two facilities, and so they will be on the second floor of the student center as well as a student newspaper. So again, it's about creating density of services that students have access to in an area that we expect that they'll be frequently. This is some very early, this is a renovation that's earlier in its production, so we'll have some updated renderings, but this is an idea of what that entrance area could look like, again, making it welcoming, students already gather there, but the seating isn't very nice, it's not very welcoming, we need to do better. And there's again, the layout before, this is what we have now, you can see a lot more parking lots, especially in the southeast corner, and then after, with that new entrance from the east, eliminating a lot of the parking lots. And then, of course, the most important thing again, for me, budget. And so you can see again, we're $476,000 over with the current estimates, but we've got $4.8 million in contingency. And these buildings are out of the ground where most of the risk is, we have $3.4 million between the two buildings for contingency, we're not expecting to use that, and so that's what's basically going to allow us to continue well under the, the budget here. And you do see that, again, a very healthy budget for renovation and demo, about $31 million that we're looking at. Any questions on Merrimack?
How is the community gracing all of it?
I think that we've gotten positive feedback from the buildings and that they tie in nicely, you know, they still have a big construction site in front of them, so if you look over north on Big Bend, right, and you first see construction fencing, but they're able to see it now. You know, we have had some conversations around traffic calming, I think that there was just a vote actually to try to reduce the speed on Big Bend, and I don't believe that passed, it wasn't something that we were running, but just the community's involvement there. What we're looking forward to is those open houses, right? We were going to have ribbon cuttings when the buildings are done, but the real thing here would be that open house, and MarCom and Sky Love See and the MarCom team, as well as campus leadership, are working really hard on making sure that we have some very memorable events for those open houses, bring in everyone, it's not just for students, it is for the whole community to see these buildings, so that's what we're looking forward to.
And hopefully we're doing that for all of our campuses.
Every building, every campus.
Awesome. Any other questions? I think we'd love to see updates on other buildings, if you want to do them again in the future, I think it's always great to see.
Do the same thing with the other two campuses at some point.
Absolutely.
If that works, we can probably add that to November as well.
I hate talking about these projects, as you can tell, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much to you and your team. Next up is item number 3.1, recommendation for approval to trustee Lipkey to travel to Branson, Missouri for MCCA Annual Convention, November 13 through 15, 2024. Is there motion to approve? Moved by Robinson, second by Graham, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye? Aye, abstentions, nays, ayes have it. 3.2, recommend to approve the chancellor to approve contracts and bid awards for the period beginning November 22, 2022, and ending December 20, 2024, with approval of the chair and the vice chair, is there motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Graham, second by Larson, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye? Aye, abstentions, nays, ayes have it. Item number 4.1, approval of consent, is there a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Moved by Larson, second by Robinson, any items which should be pulled off of consent? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye, any abstentions? Ayes have it. Next up is the chancellor's report, just want to let everyone know, Dr. Pittman is at the League of Innovation meeting, and we thought it was important that he attend that, as we recently just were invited back to join that league within the last year, a little over a year now, and so we thought it was important that Dr. Pittman is there, it's in Dayton, Ohio, and so I just checked with him earlier today, that he's learning about drone programs over there, is one of the things he's learned about, and excited to be able to have some of our team over here look at it. So if you haven't got that email yet, that he wants some people to probably go look at it, I'm sure those people who work in that area, you'll be getting it soon. So look forward to hearing all the stuff that he's learning there, and I believe the Community College of St. Louis will be hosting the League of Innovation in 2026, if I remember right, based on the calendar that Dr. Pittman shared with us, so we'll be sharing that as well. So tonight, we have Dr. Langer, who's graciously agreed to sit in for Dr. Pittman, and he now gets the report. Dr. Langer?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. In consultation with Dr. Pittman, I would like to provide a few remarks on two topics. So next slide. There we go. So the marketing communications team has been working hard to launch the new enrollment marketing campaign, Reasons, which highlights the more than 1.3 million students who have chosen St. Louis Community College. It features real students sharing their reasons in specific career fields, as well as general promotion of the college. So next slide. So here are some examples, you can see across the top what a billboard might look like, you will see these in print, and you'll see digital ads in this campaign. Next slide. We'll be using campaign elements for internal branding on campuses to inform current students and employees about the campaign. You see a rendering here. Next slide. Our website homepage has been redesigned with the Reasons campaign in mind, as well as focusing on pathways. This page is scheduled to go live within the next week. You can use the link provided on the slide to take a closer look at the page. The marketing and web team has restructured the navigation based on data to provide the best experience for our students and our prospective students. So when you click on the link in Board Docs, you'll be able to go in there and, and see it. Next slide. So let's take a look at the new Reason 30-second video that is prominently placed on the homepage and will be used as a campaign commercial.
Since 1962, St. Louis Community College has served over a million students, each with their own reason for seeking an education. Our associate degrees, certificates, and short-term career training have helped over a million people make their career dreams a reality. Start on the path to four-year degrees, serve as role models to their families, and make an impact on our community. Ready to transform your life? Find your reason at stlcc.edu.
Yeah, isn't that cool? Next slide. There we go. We've also applied our Reason campaign to our employees, asking them to share their reasons for working at St. Louis Community College, and here's a couple of examples of people you may know, yeah. All right, next slide. The second item, and running kind of off the last item, is a little bit of an update on Professional Development Day, which I think the trustees are familiar with. Professional Development Day is open to all full-time employees of the college, it's the one time in the year where we're all together in a single location. The day is designed to cover a broad range of topics suitable for participants at all levels in the college and from a variety of backgrounds. We offered 44 breakout sessions aligned across four tracks, the tracks were skill-building, instructional innovation, professional growth, and community building. You may see Dr. Pittman at the top providing his reason as a keynote speaker. The overall, the Human Resources Department did a little survey, and so they found that the overall experience rating for this development day was 4.4 on a five-point scale, which means folks were awfully satisfied with it. The day was made possible through collaboration between marketing, facilities, IT, and a heavy lift by HR. A big thank you to all who shared their time and talent to host or lead a session. And there's one more slide that has some more pictures from that awesome day. You'll see one of our student speakers off there to the right, you see a little bit of kickball action to the upper left, and then a session, there was also some t-shirts provided, you can see that in the, in the picture in the bottom middle. So there's one more slide to cap off the chancellor's report, and that's a slide that shows kind of the audience, us all together, to kind of give a sense of perspective when we get all together, how big a group it is. Thank you for the time to present the chancellor's report.
Thank you so much, it's awesome to see both things, and certainly I love, our campaigns are seeming like they're coming faster than before, and that seemed like before we had a long time, and I love this one of Find Your Reason, it seems a great, little promo videos and that, so shout out to marketing and communications and everyone else who's working on that, let's give them another round of applause for all their work on that. I know, I don't know if trustees publicly got to say before, but we did get updates about the Olympics and different commercials there, and so I think we really appreciate all the efforts to not only raise awareness about what's going on at STLCC, but also for recruitment, and so it's a two-pronged piece, it's not just about recruitment, it is about awareness of what, whether we have to offer, and I think as a country, we're starting to shift more back towards community colleges as an acceptable experience for some families who maybe weren't considering it before, particularly because of the affordability pieces. For colleges are becoming more and more out of reach for affordability for families, they are starting to seek that as we see even dual enrollment, dual credit as well, of how do we get people earlier started in college, as some people are struggling with AP and IB credits, that colleges aren't taking those, but they will always take A college credit, and so there's a shift even people's thinking around that, and so thank you for both teams' work on that, and certainly it's great to see. Anyone else want to comment on that? Right now? Okay. Yep, thank you.